Can we show the video?
He's ready. We're doing it after proclamation. At the proclamation.
Good. I'd like to call this meeting to order if you would follow along with the pledge and an invocation from Chief Schmidt.
Our Father in Heaven, we thank thee for this wonderful day that we've been blessed with. Father, we are so grateful to thee for the good weather, for this community, for the love of our citizens and for the employees. Father, at this time, we ask thee to please bless us. Bless us with thy Spirit that we might go forth in peace, have calm discussions. And also, Father, we ask that thou will bless Kylan and her family. We are very thankful for her and all of her attributes. And we also ask a special blessing on the Burnie Police Department and Lieutenant Myers' family and coworkers, that they are able to have thy Spirit with them as they deal with his loss. And we ask these things in the name of thy Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, Chief. Madam Clerk, can we get a roll call, please?
Lucas, Houghton, Cooper.
Here.
Milton.
Yep.
Denham.
Here.
LeBlanc.
Here.
Schultz.
Present.
Your Honor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. We're gonna start off tonight with City Clerk Hillary has a recognition she would like to present.
Yes. Woo! 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 Silent Chaney, come on down. She's right here. It's not a long, it's not a long walk for her. I know. On behalf of the Mayor, Board of Aldermen, City Administrator, City Staff, it's my honor to announce Deputy City Clerk Kylan Chaney as the City of Branson June 2025 Service and Excellence Employee of the Month. So, Kylan, she was nominated for her outstanding initiative in getting the City Clerk's Office designated as an official passport acceptance facility. Recognizing a gap in local services, she led the effort, worked closely with the U.S. Department of State for nearly a year to complete the required forms, trainings, and approvals. Thanks to her dedication, the city began accepting passport applications on March 30th. And Kylan continues to manage appointments and inquiries, and her efforts have resulted in a valuable new service for the community. I would also like to note, it is the first passport facility in Branson, the only passport facility in Branson, and the first City Clerk's Office in the entire state of Missouri to offer the service to the community. I mean, come on! She did that, right here. She did that. No, no, it's not her. So, on behalf of the City of Branson, here is your sign. Look at that, pretty. She's so surprised. Look at her. She had nothing to do with it.
See your sign?
Very pretty.
Aww.
There we go, there we go.
Thank you.
Ready, one, two, three.
Let's get one with her family up here, too.
Yes, of course.
Aww.
Hi, everybody.
Hi, guys.
So fun to see you.
Welcome to the meeting.
You're welcome. Ready, one, two, three. Do one more. Got it.
Wait, Jason. Oh, I thought you were coming down. We're good.
Didn't want to miss it.
Yeah. Woo! Yeah, Kylan! There you go. Awesome. Yeah.
Hi. I have a proclamation, and Chief Schmidt, would you meet me at the podium? Before I share this proclamation, I'd like to just give a shout out to our police department. We had a fire in a apartment complex, and as one of the units were putting out the fire, on the third floor, there was an individual that our fire department had to get their ladders out and rescued him and his pet, which I understand was a two-foot lizard. Just saying, we do not discriminate in Branson, Missouri. All pets are pets. Now for the chief. Whereas law, this is a proclamation for our National Law Enforcement Week. Whereas law enforcement officers across the United States serve with unwavering dedication, bravery, and professionalism, putting their lives on the line each day to protect others, uphold justice, and preserve peace in the communities they serve. And whereas National Law Enforcement Week, held annually in Branson, Missouri, is a time to honor and recognize the service and sacrifice for all members of the law enforcement community, past and present, from across the nation, as well as to show appreciation for their families who support them. And whereas this week serves as a meaningful opportunity for citizens and communities to come together in unity and gratitude, strengthening relationships between the public and those who have sworn to protect it, while also fostering respect for the important role law enforcement plays in our nation. And whereas organized by a registered 501(c)(3) nonprofit, National Law Enforcement Week reflects our shared commitment to support and stand with law enforcement officers everywhere, with proceeds benefiting law enforcement families and related causes. Now therefore, I Larry Milton, the Mayor of City of Branson, along with the Board of Aldermen, do hereby proclaim June 14th through the 21st as National Law Enforcement Week.
This is for everybody in the audience, as well as people listening. I can't tell you how proud I am of this community. This is unique to Branson. This is not Memorial Week, which occurs in May. This is a time for law enforcement officers from across the country to come and vacation extremely cheaply in the Branson area. We have so many sponsors and so many people that jump up to make this affordable for them. And what I like to tell everybody is to give them a dose of our hospitality and love that really is unique to this community. As anybody that's following the news knows, right now, there's locations such as California, where those officers are getting bricks and fireworks and everything else thrown at them. And so it's wonderful that they can take a break and come here and experience the love and support of a community that actually appreciates their law enforcement. So. So with that, if you're listening, come out and see some of the festivities during the week. On Tuesday, it's dedicated to law enforcement at Silver Dollar City, and all of the K-9 units from regionally, all the way as far as Joplin and Harrison, Arkansas, will be there doing demos, two different demos during the day. And then on Thursday evening, we're gonna have the light parade, which is all kinds of law enforcement vehicles from all over the region. And at the end, the Hay Goods are doing a drone show for us as well, so it's gonna be a good time. So come on down. Thank you.
And before we move on, what I'd like to do is, we have a brief video, and before we show it, I think there is a huge thank you to Heather. She has done so much, and a lot of it is behind the scenes. But what we're about to witness is, number one, I know money can buy it. This cost Branson zero dollars and may have one of the single biggest effects on the awareness of Branson, Missouri nationwide.
Then we're gonna check out the season's biggest trends. These are trends that are big according to Google, Instagram, and Pinterest, so we know that they're legit trends.
Okay, so from embracing nature to the most searched vacation spots to Martha Stewart, NBC's Emily Kettig, is here with everything we need to know. So let's start with travel. What are the trending destinations?
Well, I just got back from the Arctic, but apparently, most Americans want to go there craving the Caribbean, that warm weather destination. So according to Google search data, some of the top travel destinations include Puerto Rico, just south of Puerto Rico, Curacao. In the states, the number one most searched national park, Yellowstone. Fun fact, that's the oldest national park and a personal favorite of mine. And then Branson, Missouri is a really popular family vacation destination. That's in the heart of the Ozarks. So you got like the rivers, the hiking, the outdoor activities.
The shows.
Yes, exactly. The whole mix of it.
That's good stuff. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers this evening?
We do not.
Well, we have about 30 minutes to count. Next is the consent agenda. Are there any items that any members of the board or staff would like to have moved down from the consent agenda to ask additional questions or comments? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, would you please read the items on the consent agenda?
Your Honor, the items on the consent agenda are as follows: Approval of the Board of Aldermen Minutes for the May 22nd, 2025 Special Meeting, May 27th, 2025 Special Meeting, and May 27th, 2025 Regular Meeting. Acknowledged receipt of Comprehensive Planning Committee Minutes for the January 16th, 2025, and March 27th, 2025 Meeting. Acknowledged receipt of monthly contract report from May 5th, 2025 to June 1st, 2025. Final reading of Bill Number 6551 and ordinance repealing ordinance Number 2025-0021 and approving a municipal electric service agreement with the Empire District Electric Company, DBA Liberty, and authorizing the mayor to execute the agreement. Final reading of Bill Number 6552 and ordinance approving an agreement for engineering services and other preparatory work with the Empire District Electric Company, DBA Liberty. Relocation and cost of telecommunications facilities relating to the West 76 Country Boulevard Segments 1 and 2. Construction project replacing the utility agreement with Liberty approved by ordinance Number 2025-0021 and authorizing the mayor to execute the agreement. Final reading of Bill Number 6553 and ordinance amending Section 2-28 of the Branson Municipal Code pertaining to the Administrative Supervisory Committees. Your Honor, that concludes the reading of the consent agenda.
I have motion approving all items on the consent agenda.
So moved.
Motion to second. Madam Clerk, we'll take a roll call vote, please.
Lucas, Houghton.
Yes.
Cooper.
Yes.
Denham.
Yes.
LeBlanc.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
The result of the vote is 6-0. Motion carries. Your Honor, the next item is the first reading of Bill Number 6554, an ordinance approving an amended and restated plan for an industrial development project for the Butterfly Palace Expansion Project, authorizing the city to engage bond council for the issuance of industrial revenue bonds, authorizing all actions necessary to issue bonds, and authorizing the mayor to execute an addendum to the development agreement for the expansion of the Butterfly Palace.
You've heard the first reading of Bill 6554. Do I have motion approving this bill?
So moved.
Second.
We have motion to second. We'll get a staff report from Lindsay. Oh. Lindsay, you snuck in. Lindsay, I think you're on mute. Oops, she says.
Yes, I am. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Board of Aldermen. As we just heard from the first reading, that this is the Chapter 100 Plan that is related to the Butterfly Palace Expansion Project. We did approve the development agreement and other related items over the last month, but this is an amended Chapter 100 Plan because there were a few errors in the math from the last plan. So this is the Chapter 100 Plan in front of you tonight. There are real, no major changes as what you were presented earlier this month, or last month, I should say. I can take any questions if there are any in particular, but just stating again that there were just a few math errors in the last plan, and those have been corrected in this one.
Any questions from the board? Any questions from the audience? Hearing none. Let's vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Ayes have it.
Your Honor, the next item is appointments. The appointment process is in accordance with the Boarding Committee Appointment Procedures for Category 5 Appointments made by the Mayor with approval of the Board of Aldermen. Mayor, please announce your slate of appointments to be voted on.
I'm requesting the following appointments to be made for Category 5 for the Branson Commerce Park Community Improvement District. Butch Lomax, term expiring January 26th. Joseph Boyd, term expiring January 26th. Bob Hules, term expiring January 28th. And Emma Baird, term expiring January 28th. The board will be voting on a slate of appointments. Are there any Aldermen requesting an appointment to be pulled from the slate to be voted on individually? Do I have motion to approve the slate of appointments for Category 5 as presented?
So moved.
We have motion to second. Any discussion? Glenn.
How many board members are in this board?
There were five total.
Five? So they're gonna have one open position?
We are planning on opening applications again.
To fill that fifth spot?
Next week, yeah.
Good, because, you know, otherwise, they can appoint an interim director, as I understand it, and I'd prefer that this board take action.
So Hillary, when are you gonna put that application out?
We're planning for next Wednesday, not tomorrow, but the next one. We have a few others that we're opening at the same time.
I would just point out, just based on my last comments when we first talked about the slate, that Alderman Lucas and I did meet with a number of the candidates, and we had some good discussions about sunshine law and posting meetings and things like that. So we're hoping for better results in the future.
Glenn, was there another person that you thought was going to apply? Maybe you can reach out to them?
Yeah, I can. I can do that.
Okay. So we have a motion to approve these appointments for Category 5 as presented. Did I already do that? Okay. Any further discussion? Anybody in the audience? Hearing none. Let's vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Ayes have it, and thank you to everybody who's willing to serve.
All right, Your Honor, the next item is also appointments, and this appointment procedure is in accordance with the Boarding Committee Procedure. Mayor, please announce your slate of appointments to be voted on.
I'm requesting the following appointments be made for Category 5: The Branson Hills Infrastructure Facilities Community Improvement District. Barry Schwartz, his term expiring, excuse me, expiring June 29th. Andrew Rupert, I apologize for that, with a term expiring June 29th. Lawrence Callahan, term expiring June 28th. Russell Schenowick, term expiring June of 28th. And Philip McGregor, with a term expiring June 28th. The board will be voting on a slate of appointments. Are there any Aldermen requesting an appointment to be pulled from the slate to be voted on individually? Do I have motion to approve the slate of appointments for Category 5 as presented?
So moved.
Second.
We have motion to second. Any discussion?
Same question here. Does this fill their board?
Yes, sir. It does. They have five.
I guess I'd just take this opportunity, since we didn't have a chance to meet with these individuals, that, you know, the one thing we hear is a request from the citizens to see better notification of meetings. And posting it in one window of one office building simply isn't sufficient. And I think our city clerk would happily help with public posting their meetings if asked. And so I would ask this board, as they step into their new terms, to please, please consider availing themselves of that.
And Glenn, I want to appreciate when you brought this up after the first read. For the accountability of the CID Board, you really raised our awareness on the lack of that connectivity to these community members. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Any comments from the audience? Hearing none. Let's vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign.
Aye.
Ayes have it. And again, thank you for those who have signed up for their willingness to serve.
Your Honor, this is first reading of Bill Number 6555, an ordinance approving an amendment to the Tourism and Marketing Services Contract between the City of Branson and the Branson Lakes Area Chamber of Commerce and Convention and Visitors Bureau, and authorizing the mayor execute the contract.
You've heard the first reading of Bill 6555. Do I have motion approving this bill?
So moved.
Second.
We have motion to second. We'll get a staff report from Saul.
This is just a simple amendment to allow the chamber to use marketing dollars that are provided by the city to, you know, just flexibility in those dollars, really. I mean, it's pretty simple. If you have questions about what we're allowing them to do different, I'm more than happy to take any of this time, but it's just expanding the scope to allow venues, attractions, other popular things that are used in a lot of marketing materials to highlight the beneficial businesses and things that go on. Theaters, everything else in the city of, within the city of Branson's limits. And the majority of anything that is advertised must promote the stuff inside of the city limits.
So in summary, what we're doing, I mean, what this amendment is doing is, it's removing the restriction that we've had in place with our CVB contract that all the Branson dollars, marketing dollars, had to be spent within the city limits of Branson. We're referring to this as an area-wide marketing, not just the city limits. And the area in the amendment dictates within a 15-mile radius of the city limits of Branson. More specifically, there is consensus that by including Silver Dollar City and Top of the Rock, Big Cedar, in our marketing, that will enhance all businesses in Branson by driving more traffic to Branson. And we put in a safety net that any dollars that are being spent outside the city limits within this 15-mile extension needs to have city administration approval before the ad can be approved. So any questions, comments from the board?
I just, when we put this in place, because we did, I appreciate the fact that we're going, again, like with the citizens, sir, we noticed that that was maybe not the best. At the time, it was the right move. I don't regret doing it, but we was dealing with different leadership at the chamber, and things were a little different, and I feel like that's why we all agree that we should tighten the reins a little bit. And now we feel comfortable with the leadership, and therefore, I feel like this is a great move. And why would you not want to piggyback off of Johnny Morris and Silver Dollar City? So I'm glad to see this. Thank you.
Thank you, Clay. Any other comments? Any comments from the audience? Uh-oh.
Mayor, Distinguished Board, I would just like to tell you how much we appreciate your commitment to what we're trying to do in this destination. And by erasing some boundaries, we can all be included in one big, beautiful area. And it's not one big, beautiful build, but one big, beautiful area. And, you know, we have great partners to the south of us with Johnny Morris and everything that he's doing. No one loves the Ozarks more than he does, and he shows it every single day. And to be able to be inclusive with Silver Dollar City, we all win. And I know, Clay, I know why the restriction was put on in the first place. And I guarantee you, we will work hand in hand with Ms. Kathy Stepp to make sure that you all are updated, aware of what we're doing, and I think you're gonna be very pleased. And I would like Heather to come up and maybe share her thoughts on what this can mean for our destination marketing by being able to do this. So thank you again. I so appreciate it, and we are so thankful for the support that we have from you all. It's really a blessing, so thank you.
Just briefly, I think that we all know, the last time you planned a vacation, you didn't plan it around city boundary lines or where taxes are divided in the destination that you picked to go on vacation. Because if you did when you went to Sedona, Mr. Houghton, I can tell you that those are some interesting boundaries in how the taxes are all divided, and it makes for some great politics. But that's not how our average visitor plans their trip. So if we start looking at it that way, that our visitors are experiencing a destination and all the things that are part of it, that will change our focus and our direction for the future. And I think that today's show is just the beginning. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Ralph?
Yeah, I was at my first CVB Board of Directors meeting, and I can tell you, there is a, definitely an appetite for collaboration across the lines. And, you know, three years ago, that wasn't there. And, you know, I have to attribute it to the leadership at CVB and also the leadership within City Hall, that that communication and just the reassurance, because, you know, when decisions are made that are level-headed and just very commonsensical, that makes sense, that really drive traffic and drive, you know, revenue to the city and to the community, I think the leadership between these three ladies right here is just kind of part and parcel, where a lot of people are having that conversation within that meeting. And Heather and Ms. Pam can verify that that definitely was a huge, huge topic when we had our meeting. And everybody really has an appetite for that.
Thank you for sharing that. I'd also like to really just give a shout out. What Brad does at Silver Dollar City, they were just named the number-one theme park in the United States for the third year in a row by USA Today. That is amazing. This year, of all things, Johnny Morris's golf course at Top of the Rock has been named the number-one golf course resort in the nation by USA Today. So what those two, I'm gonna call them pillars, that are neighbors in Branson, I just think there is so much more synergy that can take place. And again, this decision is made to increase the visitors to Branson and benefit every single business in Branson.
And, and, Mr.?
Aww.
I was gonna, I was gonna add that according to Google, Branson is the number-one city searched for vacation destinations.
Did you see it?
I did. I actually sent it to you.
Oh, you did? We played it while you were out of the room.
So think about that, like, number one, number one, number one, birds of a feather flock together. And this is, again, no time like the present, right? We talked about that.
And, Mr. Mayor?
Marshall?
When Garth Brooks put out his album collection of all his concerts, it said "The Branson Show." So that's all I gotta say about that.
Yep. There you go. Any other comments from the board? Anybody in the audience want to share? Hearing none. Let's vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Pose same sign. Ayes have it. Unanimous vote. Pam and Heather, thank you very much.
Your Honor, this is the first reading of Bill Number 6556, an ordinance approving the contract with UKG for payroll and human resource information system software and authorizing the mayor to execute the contract.
You've heard the first reading of Bill Number 6556. Do I have a motion approving this bill?
Second.
We have motion to second. We'll get a staff report from Haley. Hello, Haley.
Hello. Good evening. Here at the City of Branson, we initiated a formal RFP process, looking for a new payroll and HRIS provider, with the goal- with the goal of having a comprehensive, integrated solution that allows us to have mobile-friendly clocking solutions, punching solutions, updated overtime calculations, and more efficiencies for our timekeepers internally. We spoke to a total of eight vendors, saw presentations from all eight. We narrowed it down to the top three, and out of those top three, we selected UKG as the finalist. UKG brings a breadth of amazing knowledge. They have a specific team that is dedicated just to government entities, and that is who we would be attached to right out of the gate and for our entire relationship with them. So today, we are asking for approval for a five-year guaranteed rate contract. This is in budget, and we're recommending approval to move forward.
Thank you for that, Haley.
Sure.
Any member of the board have any questions or comments? Anybody in the audience? Glenn?
Yeah, just a quick question. So, what does the implementation timeline look like?
It's about six months. So, our hope is to start implementation July 1, be live by January 1. So, finish up W2s and the old system, right, and move into a fresh, new one with the beginning of the year.
So, the two systems, will they be running simultaneously?
Yes, we'll run about four payroll runs, so about
That's great.
Yeah, about two months' worth. We'll run simultaneously.
Because you don't want to mess up the payroll.
No, sir.
No.
We absolutely will not go live if there's any kinks or we don't feel like 120% confident.
No. This is recorded now.
I understand.
Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, let's vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Ayes have it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Haley.
Your honor, this is the first reading of bill number 6557, an ordinance to re-adopt a procedure to disclose potential conflicts of interest and substantial interest for certain officials in order to remain in compliance with the Missouri Ethics Commission requirements.
For the first reading of bill 6557, do I have a motion approving this bill?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and we'll get a staff report from Hillary herself.
So, every two years, we need to re-adopt our procedure for our conflicts of interest so that we could have it on file with the Missouri Ethics Commission. And that is what this item is. It is the same as it is every year. And as soon as the final reading happens, we will file it with the state. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the board? Glenn?
Yes, I was going through this, and this is the first time, I think, I've been through this cycle since this is every two years. As I understand it, our general intent here is to take advantage of state statute so that we can prescribe our own requirements for disclosure. And by doing this, somebody, or twice every, once every two years, and filing it with them, we're good to go. And I appreciate that, because certainly, when I look at, if we don't do this, what the requirements are.
Sure.
It's rather painful, so I'm glad we're doing this. The question I have really deals with Section 4, which is the filing of reports. And it starts with the financial interest statements, is the phrase. And when I look back at Section 3, that it's really addressing, those are called disclosure reports. I think the really financial interest statements aren't the right term. They really should be used as disclosure reports throughout there because they're, some of them have nothing to do with financials that are required. You know, like, if you have a business interest, you have to name names and things like that without monetary amounts. So I think that really should be made consistent, and that kind of plays out overall in Section 4. There's multiple instances, and it changes terminology in there once, too. It becomes a personal financial disclosure statement as well. So, I think that just needs cleaning up. The other thing, in the last paragraph B in Section 4, there, the state mandates that if we're going to adopt this kind of ordinance, that we should essentially have the language as they provided in their statute. And this particular paragraph really doesn't meet that language. I don't know. It could be that this stuff has changed in the years since this was written. There's that possibility. I didn't have the time to go back through the state statutes. But in this paragraph, according to the state statute, it says that it has to say it's filed with the city clerk, or filed, and the city clerk should make it available. And I think their, my guess is, their intent is, they're trying to make it clear to the public who do they go to if they want to look at these statements. So, my suggestion on this, Alderman, might be that we refer this back to city staff to revise the language and bring it back with updated language so that it's all in consistent form. And if you'd like, I can make a motion to that effect.
Hillary, I'm curious. This has been the same form that I've been familiar with for six years. Have there been changes to this?
Not to the form itself, but, you know, if there's inconsistencies in the language, we're happy to, happy to take it back and clean it up. This is the exact same ordinance we've been adopting, but I do understand the points. The actual form name that gets filed with the Ethics Commission is called Personal Financial Disclosure Statement. So if we need to make that consistently clear throughout, we're happy to do that. So.
So I, you know, just since we've got this on the agenda, and we got a motion and a second in front of us, I'd move that we refer this back to city administration and ask that they bring it back updated at our next meeting in two weeks. So moved.
So that was a motion? Is there a second? I'm sorry?
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. Any discussions from the board? Clay?
Are we voting on this?
We're voting on the motion.
To table it or what? Oh.
Send it back.
I, I mean, I'll roll with the flow, but, I mean, is this kind of nitpicky, or? I'm just asking a question.
Asking for a friend?
Arsha wanted to know.
I don't mean that, I don't mean that rude. I'm just saying, is it?
Nobody's answering me.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Wouldn't that be something that would be our, a question to our city attorney for document change? I'm asking for a friend, too.
My friend wants to know what the city attorney says.
I'd be more than happy to sit down with Hillary and make sure. I was just looking through some of the statutes. I don't see any that have been changed in the last five years. I think the last one was in 2022 for the ethics stuff. But if this form was used from before that, then it may need some updating. But generally, we could probably just add a provision that says, and complies with all of the requirements of the state statutes, and that might, you know, be sufficient. So, if it's already in the state statutes, and we refer to those, then those requirements will remain. And if Glenn has some suggestions that he wants to present to us, then we're more than happy to look at them.
Glenn, how do you feel about that? Yep? Okay, I was. Okay, I thought he was making a suggestion of what we could just add to this, but.
So, we can add language to it that says, you know, as provided in state statute, or the reports must comply with state statute, something like that. But like I said, in looking at these provisions under the Missouri statutes, I mean, the last one I see that was changed was in 2022. So, I think legal counsel has reviewed this multiple times. While I personally can't speak to it very in-depth, because I haven't looked to the things that Glenn is saying, and I would be more than happy to take that time to do that. I don't know if that gives you the answer you're looking for. More than happy to look into it. I mean, I.
Well, what I'm hearing, Solon, is, are you making a suggestion that we just add what you just said, that this conforms with the state statute?
I think that would probably solve it, but I, if Glenn has something that would change my mind otherwise, I'd like him to send it to me, and so that I can look at specific things that he thinks he has issues with. And if they, if those specific things can be solved with that language, then we can just put that in there.
Now? So.
So, you have a motion and a second on the floor?
A motion and a second, so. I don't know what's.
Can we just add it on the fly here and just amend it, or?
I, I don't think we want to do it on the fly. Would be my, based on my review of it, I don't think it'd be productive to do it on the fly. The nice thing is here, we've got time. We do not have to file this with the state until September, right? And we're sitting here in June, so it's not like we're going to lose any momentum here or anything like that. We've got plenty of time to look at it and review it. And if there are changes, we can get them in front of us and consider it in total. So that was why I suggested we just refer it back.
So, we're still under discussion for Glenn's amendment. Excuse me, Glenn's motion.
Yeah, and my motion was to commit it back to city staff for review.
That's right.
And resubmission to the board in two weeks.
Any other discussion from the board?
I mean, I don't, I mean, I don't really care. I just, how much more hours and time is this going to put on people to change some verbiage? That'd be my only question. Is this like, is this going to be like a quite a deal process, or is it just getting out the old keyboard and?
You can go ahead.
I'm okay to jump in, right, Solon?
Yeah.
I mean, anytime, right, that we're taking something back and having to spend legal time. Obviously, it just takes us off of other tasks, but, you know, I mean, if that's the will of the board, then that's what we'll do. It's up to you all.
And I will add, I actually just looked, the last time these statutes were amended is actually 2020. So, for five years, legal counsel prior to me has approved this. Because these are approved every year, right, Hillary? So.
Every two years.
Every two years. So I guess we've had at least two that have come before the board already. So, whatever that's worth.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Can I just say, and I know sometimes it seems semantics and nitpicky, but when I'm, I'm pretty new in the business game, and I was just filing my sales tax for the year for my new Airbnb nightly rental property. And I do find it quite onerous and frustrating when forms and documentation are called all kinds of different names. The MOID is the Missouri State Sales Tax Number, and does that mean the same thing? So, although I understand that everything takes staff time, I also appreciate the effort to sometimes clean up language because it can be complicated and frustrating sometimes when you don't even realize it.
Any other comments from the board? Hearing none, let's vote on the motion that's on the table. Hillary?
I'm ready. Let's do it.
Hillary, would you take a roll call?
I will. I have a microphone right in front of me. Lucas?
Yes.
Houghton?
Yes.
Cooper?
Yeah.
Denham?
No.
LeBlanc?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Results of the vote is 5-1. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Hillary. We are now at the report section of the meeting. Alderman Lucas?
I'd just like to say thank you to Michael and his staff for all the time that they've put in on the Main Street project. We haven't agreed on everything, but, let's see, somebody used the word earlier, "politics." So, we'll leave that part at that. I appreciate everything that Pam and Heather are doing to market our area. And Bruce, I'm tickled to death that we're moving along with your project slowly but surely. And we will get it done. Of course, you've got a great guy sitting there beside you to help you along the way. No, that chair between you. But thank you to all of you. You're doing a great job.
Thanks, Artie. Marshall?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, about 10 years ago, when I started to become involved in local politics, I created an organization called Branson Song of Hope. In that time, we've embarked on many initiatives to preserve the history of the live music shows in our community, including the creation of a museum and Neon Sign graveyard. But one of the most lasting and important initiatives has been the annual presentation of our Song of Hope Award, given every year to an individual or family who has spent a career advocating for Branson's entertainment industry. While we give this award every year and have presented it to the likes of the Hughes family, Jim Barber, and a few other important figures in the industry, sometimes the inspiration for that year's winner comes at unexpected times. Last month, one of our aldermen gave a report about all he's doing to bring some incredible names back to a Branson stage. And sometimes the person you should honor with a recognition such as this is just pretty darn obvious. Therefore, I want to announce tonight that the 2025 Song of Hope Award is being awarded to Mr. Clay Cooper.
Wow.
Speech, speech!
Wow, that's a, that coming.
He gets a speech and his comments, by the way.
Oh, thanks, dude. That's really cool, man. I had no idea. Did you know that was happening?
Yes, I did.
You little sneaky devil. Oh, yeah, I was gone. Well, that's awesome. Thanks, man. Yeah, that's cool. Yeah, next year, my 40th year, next year, 40th year of entertainment is crazy.
You started at six years old.
Well, 16, close, yeah. No, that's, that's awesome, yeah. I'm just proud to be, you know, when I, when I moved here at 16, I thought it was just going to be a summer, you know, a little summer gig, working, singing at the Ozark Country Jubilee, and then working with Pam's husband, Danny. He taught me all the bad stuff right off the bat. How to do this, how to do that, you know. But, yeah, it's, it's pretty cool, you know. And I always tell the story about how, when I was a teenager working at the Ozark Jubilee, that we used to walk across the street to the theater that I have now and watch The Texans, which was my favorite show in Branson. And I'd sit out there like two or three nights a week, and I'd stop and talk to JD. He'd be on his stilts out there signing pictures. And, and now all these years later, it's ours. It's just, it's kind of wild. It's been a, it's been a pretty crazy ride, you know. My mom died when I was 12, and music was kind of a, I started writing songs and singing and kind of on my own, you know, 14 or 15. My sister was four years older, and she kind of kept me out of trouble. And then I found this band and moved to Branson, and it's just been, God has really blessed me. It's been, it's pretty cool. So, I'm just glad to be a part of it. And thank you for the, that's neat, Marshall. Thank you, buddy. That's cool. So, yeah, I just love Branson and everything it has to offer. And I'm excited about all the acts that we're bringing in, because I feel like that, too, is, as we know, Terry Bradshaw's mentioned Branson about three times on some big networks in the past year, and that's, that's been good for business. And Randy Travis, and The Sleep With The Will, and Isaacs, and T.G. Shepard, Neil McCoy, and Mel Tillis, and all these guys coming to our theater and play. So it's been, it's kind of, it's kind of wild to be a kid and, you know, idolize all these guys. And now they're like working in your building and friends, and, you know, so that's pretty cool. And speaking of publicity, tonight is Yakov on The Jimmy Fallon Show. That's tonight, right? So, thanks for that reminder. That'd be a good hit for Branson. He better mention it three or four times, or I'm going to come after him. But anyhow, thank you. I appreciate it, Marshall, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you again, Marshall. Ruth?
Congratulations, Clay. Well-deserved. Thanks for all you do for our community. And you do a great job. I just wanted to look back on our study session that we had earlier tonight. If, we did not have the cohesion that we have at the city right now. A big thank you to Kathy and Alex, because it's a tough job. And not only have they been so in. And not only have they been so instrumental in pulling this city back together, they're also able to just reach out into the community, shows with Chamber, CBB. Branson's about to bust again. I mean, you can just feel these growing pains and I'm, I'm really excited and it would not take place if we didn't have the cohesion that we have. So just a huge thank you to everybody that just works together, all the citizens that come to the meetings constantly, always here bringing support. And we, we just have an amazing city building back up. So thank you to all the staff, all the directors, Kathy and Alex, all our community. Thank you for what we're all doing as a whole for this city.
Ralph?
When I first came to Branson, no. Actually, I thought it'd be a year and I'd go to some big city and here I am, 28 years later, so right on your heels there, Clay. So Ruth mentioned cohesion, and that cohesion doesn't occur unless there's great leadership. And, and it's a top-down thing and it starts with, you know, this board, you know, really having, you know, individually having our, our own perspectives and bringing them together collectively and, and making great decisions for our community. But, but even more importantly, with, where it starts with our city staff, with, with Kathy and Alex and, and every director below them. And, you know, it is great to see how we've come nearly full circle from three, four years ago where there was a lot of angst and decision and, and just things not getting done. You know, I think Michael said, you know, in COVID, we didn't maintain the roads at all. And you look at those graphs and, and you go like, wow, what happened? And really, you know, we inherited quite a situation. And, you know, it's just, it's really great to see that we've just hit the ground running and, and put our, our minds together collectively and, and made really good decisions that are going to have lasting, lasting benefits far beyond our time on this board. And I think that's a great thing, to leave a legacy like that. If there's anything that we do is to leave this place better than we founded it, and I think we're well on our way of doing that. But it does take that level of leadership and, and we definitely have that in this community. And, and I think people are really taking note and people are really softening on that, I don't want to be associated with Branson because when you're number one, everyone wants to be associated with you.
Very nice. Glenn?
Yeah. A number of us went to the Tiny Home ribbon cutting. That, that was a nice event. Nice to see that they're making progress over there and wish them well as they move that forward. A few of us also attended the Historic Downtown CID meeting, the recent public meeting, special meeting, and we'll talk about other facets of that, I'm sure, in the near future. But I think the one thing that really stood out for me was how the people love their trolley. The downtown businesses were asked that specifically and overwhelmingly, the downtown business people to a person said, keep the trolley going, we love the trolley. So that, that was some great feedback there. I too want to say thanks to the city staff. I've been walking around up on Main Street every day or two and talking with merchants up there, seeing how things are going. I noticed the progress up there, it's really starting to take shape, and the merchants have noticed the progress too. They really appreciate the beautiful sidewalks, they're starting to point out, oh, this is where the plantings are going, goes. So instead of us telling them what's happening in the project, they're starting to tell us. And that's a good sign that things have turned. So nice to see the intersection opened up on time, just as the contract required, and I think that's great. So I think we'll probably find, I'm hoping that the next block, when that gets opened up, the conversations will be a little bit easier because it'll be easy to point to what happened just the block before them and say, it'll be just like that, it'll happen just like that, and everybody will get it. So hopefully that goes a little bit smoother with the whole community up there. But thank you to the entire staff that has worked on that. And with that being said, I think just hold your breath here because we've got the 76 project coming up. It sounds like that's about ready to get wrapped up so it can go out for bid. That'll be another major, major cherry on the ice cream for the city. That'll be a good one. And then if you've been following the TIF reports, the city staff has been working very hard on a super major development for us, bigger than Branson Landing for the city. And so that's going to really catapult the city forward again. That'll be another huge project. And I just want to thank the whole staff for all the effort that's gone into that. And I know we've got a lot more to go yet, but it sure is looking promising. The, I got a couple of calls today and texts today, so, you know, I live on Tanyo Como and a number of other people in the city live on Tanyo Como. And I got texts about the garbage going down Tanyo Como. And, you know, some of it's sea foam, so you can't get away from that. But there's awfully big chunks of extended EPS going down there, styrofoam going down. And it's always coincidental with when they open up Table Rock Dam from the top. And given the fact that, you know, we're a city that relies on surface water for our drinking, and given the fact that there's a heightened awareness of microplastics and those kind of things, of which I would imagine EPS would be a major contributor, I almost wonder if it isn't time that we have a conversation with the Army Corps as to whether they have a responsibility to stop that stuff at its source and not allow it to flow into our community here, where we're so heavily reliant on that water, both for our tourism and for our drinking. So I'd ask that maybe a placeholder be put on that. If we have a conversation with the Corps in the near future, maybe that is an item that could be put on the agenda for them to try to address it. That's it from me, other than to say congratulations, Clay. Well earned.
Thank you, Glenn. Kathy?
Just a few things. Last week, I attended a tour that we had in town for Eric Burlison and some of our state reps. The Chamber put that on. It was, in my opinion, extremely eventful. I think it was a real eye-opener for some of our state reps. And so appreciate you for doing that and doing more of those, I'm sure will be healthy in the future. I also attended the Tiny Home, the Elevate Branson had their grand opening and they're moving along. We just had a, I think, a very informative update on our roads. Anybody who missed our study session, I'm going to encourage them to go, take the time and go back and watch our study session. It was an hour long and it was so informative. I think the road updated information was extremely valuable for anybody in the construction field to get the update of our Citizen Serve program. I believe they will be enlightened. I want to thank our residents for voting in our transportation tax. So when we saw this update on our, the condition of our roads, which by the way, hats off, I mean, we're really doing, we came out of a deep hole. And with the investment it's taking to bring us back up to, we don't want to be par, we want to be above par, but we wouldn't be able to do it without our citizens supporting that transportation tax. With that, Clay, congrats again.
Thank you, sir.
And I would be remiss if I also didn't thank all of our directors. It's meetings like this study session that a lot of us are unaware of, of what's going on behind the scenes at the administration and director level. And what I saw was just a tremendous amount of work being done without anybody's knowledge and, and thinking proactively. So I am continually proud to be the mayor of Branson, Missouri. And with that, Clay, I think you're on deck. Do I have a motion to go into closed executive session?
Move to go into closed executive session pursuant to 610 dot 021 dot 1 RSMO for legal and confidential or privileged communications between a public governmental body or its representatives and its attorneys and 610 dot 021 dot 12 for negotiated contract.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Madam Clerk, would you provide a roll call vote, please?
Lucas? Howden?
Yes.
Cooper?
Yes.
Denham?
Yes.
LeBlanc?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
The result of the vote is six zero, motion carries.
The board will now move into closed executive session and will return to the council chambers once executive session is over to adjourn this Board of Aldermen regular meeting. once executive session is over to adjourn this Board of Aldermen regular meeting.[15.72][15.72][applause][17.72][17.72][end of transcript][19.72][19.72][end of transcript][21.72][21.72][end of transcript][23.72][23.72][end of transcript][25.72][25.72][end of transcript][27.72][27.72][end of transcript][29.72][29.72][end of transcript][31.72][31.72][end of transcript][33.72][33.72][end of transcript][35.72][35.72][end of transcript][37.72][37.72][end of transcript][39.72][39.72][end of transcript][41.72][41.72][end of transcript][43.72][43.72][end of transcript][45.72][45.72][end of transcript][47.72][47.72][end of transcript][49.72][49.72][end of transcript][51.72][51.72][end of transcript][53.72][53.72][end of transcript][55.72][55.72][end of transcript][57.72][57.72][end of transcript][59.72][59.72][end of transcript][61.72][61.72][end of transcript][63.72][63.72][end of transcript][65.72][65.72][end of transcript][67.72][67.72][end of transcript][69.72][69.72][end of transcript][71.72][71.72][end of transcript][73.72][73.72][end of transcript][75.72][75.72][end of transcript][77.72][77.72][end of transcript][79.72][79.72][end of transcript][81.72][81.72][end of transcript][83.72][83.72][end of transcript][85.72][85.72][end of transcript][87.72][87.72][end of transcript][89.72][89.72][end of transcript][91.72][91.72][end of transcript][93.72][93.72][end of transcript][95.72][95.72][end of transcript][97.72][97.72][end of transcript][99.72][99.72][end of transcript][101.72][101.72][end of transcript][103.72][103.72][end of transcript][105.72][105.72][end of transcript][107.72][107.72][end of transcript][109.72][109.72][end of transcript][111.72][111.72][end of transcript][113.72][113.72][end of transcript][115.72][115.72][end of transcript][117.72][117.72][end of transcript][119.72][119.72][end of transcript][121.72][121.72][end of transcript][123.72][123.72][end of transcript][125.72][125.72][end of transcript][127.72][127.72][end of transcript][129.72][129.72][end of transcript][131.72][131.72][end of transcript][133.72][133.72][end of transcript][135.72][135.72][end of transcript][137.72][137.72][end of transcript][139.72][139.72][end of transcript][141.72][141.72][end of transcript][143.72][143.72][end of transcript][145.72][145.72][end of transcript][147.72][147.72][end of transcript][149.72][149.72][end of transcript][151.72][151.72][end of transcript][153.72][153.72][end of transcript][155.72][155.72][end of transcript][157.72][157.72][end of transcript][159.72][159.72][end of transcript][161.72][161.72][end of transcript][163.72][163.72][end of transcript][165.72][165.72][end of transcript][167.72][167.72][end of transcript][169.72][169.72][end of transcript][171.72][171.72][end of transcript][173.72][173.72][end of transcript][175.72][175.72][end of transcript][177.72][177.72][end of transcript][179.72][179.72][end of transcript][181.72][181.72][end of transcript][183.72][183.72][end of transcript][185.72][185.72][end of transcript][187.72][187.72][end of transcript][189.72][189.72][end of transcript][191.72][191.72][end of transcript][193.72][193.72][end of transcript][195.72][195.72][end of transcript][197.72][197.72][end of transcript][199.72][199.72][end of transcript][201.72][201.72][end of transcript][203.72][203.72][end of transcript][205.72][205.72][end of transcript][207.72][207.72][end of transcript][209.72][209.72][end of transcript][211.72][211.72][end of transcript][213.72][213.72][end of transcript][215.72][215.72][end of transcript][217.72][217.72][end of transcript][219.72][219.72][end of transcript][221.72][221.72][end of transcript][223.72][223.72][end of transcript][225.72][225.72][end of transcript][227.72][227.72][end of transcript][229.72][229.72][end of transcript][231.72][231.72][end of transcript][233.72][233.72][end of transcript][235.72][235.72][end of transcript][237.72][237.72][end of transcript][239.72][239.72][end of transcript][241.72][241.72][end of transcript][243.72][243.72][end of transcript][245.72][245.72][end of transcript][247.72][247.72][end of transcript][249.72][249.72][end of transcript][251.72][251.72][end of transcript][253.72][253.72][end of transcript][255.72][255.72][end of transcript][257.72][257.72][end of transcript][259.72][259.72][end of transcript][261.72][261.72][end of transcript][263.72][263.72][end of transcript][265.72][265.72][end of transcript][267.72][267.72][end of transcript][269.72][269.72][end of transcript][271.72][271.72][end of transcript][273.72][273.72][end of transcript][275.72][275.72][end of transcript][277.72][277.72][end of transcript][279.72][279.72][end of transcript][281.72][281.72][end of transcript][283.72][283.72][end of transcript][285.72][285.72][end of transcript][287.72][287.72][end of transcript][289.72][289.72][end of transcript][291.72][291.72][end of transcript][293.72][293.72][end of transcript][295.72][295.72][end of transcript][297.72][297.72][end of transcript][299.72][299.72][end of transcript][301.72][301.72][end of transcript][303.72][303.72][end of transcript][305.72][305.72][end of transcript][307.72][307.72][end of transcript][309.72][309.72][end of transcript][311.72][311.72][end of transcript][313.72][313.72][end of transcript][315.72][315.72][end of transcript][317.72][317.72][end of transcript][319.72][319.72][end of transcript][321.72][321.72][end of transcript][323.72][323.72][end of transcript][325.72][325.72][end of transcript][327.72][327.72][end of transcript][329.72][329.72][end of transcript][331.72][331.72][end of transcript][333.72][333.72][end of transcript][335.72][335.72][end of transcript][337.72][337.72][end of transcript][339.72][339.72][end of transcript][341.72][341.72][end of transcript][343.72][343.72][end of transcript][345.72][345.72][end of transcript][347.72][347.72][end of transcript][349.72][349.72][end of transcript][351.72][351.72][end of transcript][353.72][353.72][end of transcript][355.72][355.72][end of transcript][357.72][357.72][end of transcript][359.72][359.72][end of transcript][361.72][361.72][end of transcript][363.72][363.72][end of transcript][365.72][365.72][end of transcript][367.72][367.72][end of transcript][369.72][369.72][end of transcript][371.72][371.72][end of transcript][373.72][373.72][end of transcript][375.72][375.72][end of transcript][377.72][377.72][end of transcript][379.72][379.72][end of transcript][381.72][381.72][end of transcript][383.72][383.72][end of transcript][385.72][385.72][end of transcript][387.72][387.72][end of transcript][389.72][389.72][end of transcript][391.72][391.72][end of transcript][393.72][393.72][end of transcript][395.72][395.72][end of transcript][397.72][397.72][end of transcript][399.72][399.72][end of transcript][401.72][401.72][end of transcript][403.72][403.72][end of transcript][405.72][405.72][end of transcript][407.72][407.72][end of transcript][409.72][409.72][end of transcript][411.72][411.72][end of transcript][413.72][413.72][end of transcript][415.72][415.72][end of transcript][417.72][417.72][end of transcript][419.72][419.72][end of transcript][421.72][421.72][end of transcript][423.72][423.72][end of transcript][425.72][425.72][end of transcript][427.72][427.72][end of transcript][429.72][429.72][end of transcript][431.72][431.72][end of transcript][433.72][433.72][end of transcript][435.72][435.72][end of transcript][437.72][437.72][end of transcript][439.72][439.72][end of transcript][441.72][441.72][end of transcript][443.72][443.72][end of transcript][445.72][445.72][end of transcript][447.72][447.72][end of transcript][449.72][449.72][end of transcript][451.72][451.72][end of transcript][453.72][453.72][end of transcript][455.72][455.72][end of transcript][457.72][457.72][end of transcript][459.72][459.72][end of transcript][461.72][461.72][end of transcript][463.72][463.72][end of transcript][465.72][465.72][end of transcript][467.72][467.72][end of transcript][469.72][469.72][end of transcript][471.72][471.72][end of transcript][473.72][473.72][end of transcript][475.72][475.72][end of transcript][477.72][477.72][end of transcript][479.72][479.72][end of transcript][481.72][481.72][end of transcript][483.72][483.72][end of transcript][485.72][485.72][end of transcript][487.72][487.72][end of transcript][489.72][489.72][end of transcript][491.72][491.72][end of transcript][493.72][493.72][end of transcript][495.72][495.72][end of transcript][497.72][497.72][end of transcript][499.72][499.72][end of transcript][501.72][501.72][end of transcript][503.72][503.72][end of transcript][505.72][505.72][end of transcript][507.72][507.72][end of transcript][509.72][509.72][end of transcript][511.72][511.72][end of transcript][513.72][513.72][end of transcript][515.72][515.72][end of transcript][517.72][517.72][end of transcript][519.72][519.72][end of transcript][521.72][521.72][end of transcript][523.72][523.72][end of transcript][525.72][525.72][end of transcript][527.72][527.72][end of transcript][529.72][529.72][end of transcript][531.72][531.72][end of transcript][533.72][533.72][end of transcript][535.72][535.72][end of transcript][537.72][537.72][end of transcript][539.72][539.72][end of transcript][541.72][541.72][end of transcript][543.72][543.72][end of transcript][545.72][545.72][end of transcript][547.72][547.72][end of transcript][549.72][549.72][end of transcript][551.72][551.72][end of transcript][553.72][553.72][end of transcript][555.72][555.72][end of transcript][557.72][557.72][end of transcript][559.72][559.72][end of transcript][561.72][561.72][end of transcript][563.72][563.72][end of transcript][565.72][565.72][end of transcript][567.72][567.72][end of transcript][569.72][569.72][end of transcript][571.72][571.72][end of transcript][573.72][573.72][end of transcript][575.72][575.72][end of transcript][577.72][577.72][end of transcript][579.72][579.72][end of transcript][581.72][581.72][end of transcript][583.72][583.72][end of transcript][585.72][585.72][end of transcript][587.72][587.72][end of transcript][589.72][589.72][end of transcript][591.72][591.72][end of transcript][593.72][593.72][end of transcript][595.72][595.72][end of transcript][597.72][597.72][end of transcript][599.72][599.72][end of transcript][601.72][601.72][end of transcript][603.72][603.72][end of transcript][605.72][605.72][end of transcript][607.72][607.72][end of transcript][609.72][609.72][end of transcript][611.72][611.72][end of transcript][613.72][613.72][end of transcript][615.72][615.72][end of transcript][617.72][617.72][end of transcript][619.72][619.72][end of transcript][621.72][621.72][end of transcript][623.72][623.72][end of transcript][625.72][625.72][end of transcript][627.72][627.72][end of transcript][629.72][629.72][end of transcript][631.72][631.72][end of transcript][633.72][633.72][end of transcript][635.72][635.72][end of transcript][637.72][637.72][end of transcript][639.72][639.72][end of transcript][641.72][641.72][end of transcript][643.72][643.72][end of transcript][645.72][645.72][end of transcript][647.72][647.72][end of transcript][649.72][649.72][end of transcript][651.72][651.72][end of transcript][653.72][653.72][end of transcript][655.72][655.72][end of transcript][657.72][657.72][end of transcript][659.72][659.72][end of transcript][661.72][661.72][end of transcript][663.72][663.72][end of transcript][665.72][665.72][end of transcript][667.72][667.72][end of transcript][669.72][669.72][end of transcript][671.72][671.72][end of transcript][673.72][673.72][end of transcript][675.72][675.72][end of transcript][677.72][677.72][end of transcript][679.72][679.72][end of transcript][681.72][681.72][end of transcript][683.72][683.72][end of transcript][685.72][685.72][end of transcript][687.72][687.72][end of transcript][689.72][689.72][end of transcript][691.72][691.72][end of transcript][693.72][693.72][end of transcript][695.72][695.72][end of transcript][697.72][697.72][end of transcript][699.72][699.72][end of transcript][701.72][701.72][end of transcript][703.72][703.72][end of transcript][705.72][705.72][end of transcript][707.72][707.72][end of transcript][709.72][709.72][end of transcript][711.72][711.72][end of transcript][713.72][713.72][end of transcript][715.72][715.72][end of transcript][717.72][717.72][end of transcript][719.72][719.72][end of transcript][721.72][721.72][end of transcript][723.72][723.72][end of transcript][725.72][725.72][end of transcript][727.72][727.72][end of transcript][729.72][729.72][end of transcript][731.72][731.72][end of transcript][733.72][733.72][end of transcript][735.72][735.72][end of transcript][737.72][737.72][end of transcript][739.72][739.72][end of transcript][741.72][741.72][end of transcript][743.72][743.72][end of transcript][745.72][745.72][end of transcript][747.72][747.72][end of transcript][749.72][749.72][end of transcript][751.72][751.72][end of transcript][753.72][753.72][end of transcript][755.72][755.72][end of transcript][757.72][757.72][end of transcript][759.72][759.72][end of transcript][761.72][761.72][end of transcript][763.72][763.72][end of transcript][765.72][765.72][end of transcript][767.72][767.72][end of transcript][769.72][769.72][end of transcript][771.72][771.72][end of transcript][773.72][773.72][end of transcript][775.72][775.72][end of transcript][777.72][777.72][end of transcript][779.72][779.72][end of transcript][781.72][781.72][end of transcript][783.72][783.72][end of transcript][785.72][785.72][end of transcript][787.72][787.72][end of transcript][789.72][789.72][end of transcript][791.72][791.72][end of transcript][793.72][793.72][end of transcript][795.72][795.72][end of transcript][797.72][797.72][end of transcript][799.72][799.72][end of transcript][801.72][801.72][end of transcript][803.72][803.72][end of transcript][805.72][805.72][end of transcript][807.72][807.72][end of transcript][809.72][809.72][end of transcript][811.72][811.72][end of transcript][813.72][813.72][end of transcript][815.72][815.72][end of transcript][817.72][817.72][end of transcript][819.72][819.72][end of transcript][821.72][821.72][end of transcript][823.72][823.72][end of transcript][825.72][825.72][end of transcript][827.72][827.72][end of transcript][829.72][829.72][end of transcript][831.72][831.72][end of transcript][833.72][833.72][end of transcript][835.72][835.72][end of transcript][837.72][837.72][end of transcript][839.72][839.72][end of transcript][841.72][841.72][end of transcript][843.72][843.72][end of transcript][845.72][845.72][end of transcript][847.72][847.72][end of transcript][849.72][849.72][end of transcript][851.72][851.72][end of transcript][853.72][853.72][end of transcript][855.72][855.72][end of transcript][857.72][857.72][end of transcript][859.72][859.72][end of transcript][861.72][861.72][end of transcript][863.72][863.72][end of transcript][865.72][865.72][end of transcript][867.72][867.72][end of transcript][869.72][869.72][end of transcript][871.72][871.72][end of transcript][873.72][873.72][end of transcript][875.72][875.72][end of transcript][877.72][877.72][end of transcript][879.72][879.72][end of transcript][881.72][881.72][end of transcript][883.72][883.72][end of transcript][885.72][885.72][end of transcript][887.72][887.72][end of transcript][889.72][889.72][end of transcript][891.72][891.72][end of transcript][893.72][893.72][end of transcript][895.72][895.72][end of transcript][897.72][897.72][end of transcript][899.72][899.72][end of transcript][901.72][901.72][end of transcript][903.72][903.72][end of transcript][905.72][905.72][end of transcript][907.72][907.72][end of transcript][909.72][909.72][end of transcript][911.72][911.72][end of transcript][913.72][913.72][end of transcript][915.72][915.72][end of transcript][917.72][917.72][end of transcript][919.72][919.72][end of transcript][921.72][921.72][end of transcript][923.72][923.72][end of transcript][925.72][925.72][end of transcript][927.72][927.72][end of transcript][929.72][929.72][end of transcript][931.72][931.72][end of transcript][933.72][933.72][end of transcript][935.72][935.72][end of transcript][937.72][937.72][end of transcript][939.72][939.72][end of transcript][941.72][941.72][end of transcript][943.72][943.72][end of transcript][945.72][945.72][end of transcript][947.72][947.72][end of transcript][949.72][949.72][end of transcript][951.72][951.72][end of transcript][953.72][953.72][end of transcript][955.72][955.72][end of transcript][957.72][957.72][end of transcript][959.72][959.72][end of transcript][961.72][961.72][end of transcript][963.72][963.72][end of transcript][965.72][965.72][end of transcript][967.72][967.72][end of transcript][969.72][969.72][end of transcript][971.72][971.72][end of transcript][973.72][973.72][end of transcript][975.72][975.72][end of transcript][977.72][977.72][end of transcript][979.72][979.72][end of transcript][981.72][981.72][end of transcript][983.72][983.72][end of transcript][985.72][985.72][end of transcript][987.72][987.72][end of transcript][989.72][989.72][end of transcript][991.72][991.72][end of transcript][993.72][993.72][end of transcript][995.72][995.72][end of transcript][997.72][997.72][end of transcript][999.72][999.72][end of transcript][1001.72][1001.72][end of transcript][1003.72][1003.72][end of transcript][1005.72][1005.72][end of transcript][1007.72][1007.72][end of transcript][1009.72][1009.72][end of transcript][1011.72][1011.72][end of transcript][1013.72][1013.72][end of transcript][1015.72][1015.72][end of transcript][1017.72][1017.72][end of transcript][1019.72][1019.72][end of transcript][1021.72][1021.72][end of transcript][1023.72][1023.72][end of transcript][1025.72][1025.72][end of transcript][1027.72][1027.72][end of transcript][1029.72][1029.72][end of transcript][1031.72][1031.72][end of transcript][1033.72][1033.72][end of transcript][1035.72][1035.72][end of transcript][1037.72][1037.72][end of transcript][1039.72][1039.72][end of transcript][1041.72][1041.72][end of transcript][1043.72][1043.72][end of transcript][1045.72][1045.72][end of transcript][1047.72][1047.72][end of transcript][1049.72][1049.72][end of transcript][1051.72][1051.72][end of transcript][1053.72][1053.72][end of transcript][1055.72][1055.72][end of transcript][1057.72][1057.72][end of transcript][1059.72][1059.72][end of transcript][1061.72][1061.72][end of transcript][1063.72][1063.72][end of transcript][1065.72][1065.72][end of transcript][1067.72][1067.72][end of transcript][1069.72][1069.72][end of transcript][1071.72][1071.72][end of transcript][1073.72][1073.72][end of transcript][1075.72][1075.72][end of transcript][1077.72][1077.72][end of transcript][1079.72][1079.72][end of transcript][1081.72][1081.72][end of transcript][1083.72][1083.72][end of transcript][1085.72][1085.72][end of transcript][1087.72][1087.72][end of transcript][1089.72][1089.72][end of transcript][1091.72][1091.72][end of transcript][1093.72][1093.72][end of transcript][1095.72][1095.72][end of transcript][1097.72][1097.72][end of transcript][1099.72][1099.72][end of transcript][1101.72][1101.72][end of transcript][1103.72][1103.72][end of transcript][1105.72][1105.72][end of transcript][1107.72][1107.72][end of transcript][1109.72][1109.72][end of transcript][1111.72][1111.72][end of transcript][1113.72][1113.72][end of transcript][1115.72][1115.72][end of transcript][1117.72][1117.72][end of transcript][1119.72][1119.72][end of transcript][1121.72][1121.72][end of transcript][1123.72][1123.72][end of transcript][1125.72][1125.72][end of transcript][1127.72][1127.72][end of transcript][1129.72][1129.72][end of transcript][1131.72][1131.72][end of transcript][1133.72][1133.72][end of transcript][1135.72][1135.72][end of transcript][1137.72][1137.72][end of transcript][1139.72][1139.72][end of transcript][1141.72][1141.72][end of transcript][1143.72][1143.72][end of transcript][1145.72][1145.72][end of transcript][1147.72][1147.72][end of transcript][1149.72][1149.72][end of transcript][1151.72][1151.72][end of transcript][1153.72][1153.72][end of transcript][1155.72][1155.72][end of transcript][1157.72][1157.72][end of transcript][1159.72][1159.72][end of transcript][1161.72][1161.72][end of transcript][1163.72][1163.72][end of transcript][1165.72][1165.72][end of transcript][1167.72][1167.72][end of transcript][1169.72][1169.72][end of transcript][1171.72][1171.72][end of transcript][1173.72][1173.72][end of transcript][1175.72][1175.72][end of transcript][1177.72][1177.72][end of transcript][1179.72][1179.72][end of transcript][1181.72][1181.72][end of transcript][1183.72][1183.72][end of transcript][1185.72][1185.72][end of transcript][1187.72][1187.72][end of transcript][1189.72][1189.72][end of transcript][1191.72][1191.72][end of transcript][1193.72][1193.72][end of transcript][1195.72][1195.72][end of transcript][1197.72][1197.72][end of transcript][1199.72][1199.72][end of transcript][1201.72][1201.72][end of transcript][1203.72][1203.72][end of transcript][1205.72][1205.72][end of transcript][1207.72][1207.72][end of transcript][1209.72][1209.72][end of transcript][1211.72][1211.72][end of transcript][1213.72][1213.72][end of transcript][1215.72][1215.72][end of transcript][1217.72][1217.72][end of transcript][1219.72][1219.72][end of transcript][1221.72][1221.72][end of transcript][1223.72][1223.72][end of transcript][1225.72][1225.72][end of transcript][1227.72][1227.72][end of transcript][1229.72][1229.72][end of transcript][1231.72][1231.72][end of transcript][1233.72][1233.72][end of transcript][1235.72][1235.72][end of transcript][1237.72][1237.72][end of transcript][1239.72][1239.72][end of transcript][1241.72][1241.72][end of transcript][1243.72][1243.72][end of transcript][1245.72][1245.72][end of transcript][1247.72][1247.72][end of transcript][1249.72][1249.72][end of transcript][1251.72][1251.72][end of transcript][1253.72][1253.72][end of transcript][1255.72][1255.72][end of transcript][1257.72][1257.72][end of transcript][1259.72][1259.72][end of transcript][1261.72][1261.72][end of transcript][1263.72][1263.72][end of transcript][1265.72][1265.72][end of transcript][1267.72][1267.72][end of transcript][1269.72][1269.72][end of transcript][1271.72][1271.72][end of transcript][1273.72][1273.72][end of transcript][1275.72][1275.72][end of transcript][1277.72][1277.72][end of transcript][1279.72][1279.72][end of transcript][1281.72][1281.72][end of transcript][1283.72][1283.72][end of transcript][1285.72][1285.72][end of transcript][1287.72][1287.72][end of transcript][1289.72][1289.72][end of transcript][1291.72][1291.72][end of transcript][1293.72][1293.72][end of transcript][1295.72][1295.72][end of transcript][1297.72][1297.72][end of transcript][1299.72][1299.72][end of transcript][1301.72][1301.72][end of transcript][1303.72][1303.72][end of transcript][1305.72][1305.72][end of transcript][1307.72][1307.72][end of transcript][1309.72][1309.72][end of transcript][1311.72][1311.72][end of transcript][1313.72][1313.72][end of transcript][1315.72][1315.72][end of transcript][1317.72][1317.72][end of transcript][1319.72][1319.72][end of transcript][1321.72][1321.72][end of transcript][1323.72][1323.72][end of transcript][1325.72][1325.72][end of transcript][1327.72][1327.72][end of transcript][1329.72][1329.72][end of transcript][1331.72][1331.72][end of transcript][1333.72][1333.72][end of transcript][1335.72][1335.72][end of transcript][1337.72][1337.72][end of transcript][1339.72][1339.72][end of transcript][1341.72][1341.72][end of transcript][1343.72][1343.72][end of transcript][1345.72][1345.72][end of transcript][1347.72][1347.72][end of transcript][1349.72][1349.72][end of transcript][1351.72][1351.72][end of transcript][1353.72][1353.72][end of transcript][1355.72][1355.72][end of transcript][1357.72][1357.72][end of transcript][1359.72][1359.72][end of transcript][1361.72][1361.72][end of transcript][1363.72][1363.72][end of transcript][1365.72][1365.72][end of transcript][1367.72][1367.72][end of transcript][1369.72][1369.72][end of transcript][1371.72][1371.72][end of transcript][1373.72][1373.72][end of transcript][1375.72][1375.72][end of transcript][1377.72][1377.72][end of transcript][1379.72][1379.72][end of transcript][1381.72][1381.72][end of transcript][1383.72][1383.72][end of transcript][1385.72][1385.72][end of transcript][1387.72][1387.72][end of transcript][1389.72][1389.72][end of transcript][1391.72][1391.72][end of transcript][1393.72][1393.72][end of transcript][1395.72][1395.72][end of transcript][1397.72][1397.72][end of transcript][1399.72][1399.72][end of transcript][1401.72][1401.72][end of transcript][1403.72][1403.72][end of transcript][1405.72][1405.72][end of transcript][1407.72][1407.72][end of transcript][1409.72][1409.72][end of transcript][1411.72][1411.72][end of transcript][1413.72][1413.72][end of transcript][1415.72][1415.72][end of transcript][1417.72][1417.72][end of transcript][1419.72][1419.72][end of transcript][1421.72][1421.72][end of transcript][1423.72][1423.72][end of transcript][1425.72][1425.72][end of transcript][1427.72][1427.72][end of transcript][1429.72][1429.72][end of transcript][1431.72][1431.72][end of transcript][1433.72][1433.72][end of transcript][1435.72][1435.72][end of transcript][1437.72][1437.72][end of transcript][1439.72][1439.72][end of transcript][1441.72][1441.72][end of transcript][1443.72][1443.72][end of transcript][1445.72][1445.72][end of transcript][1447.72][1447.72][end of transcript][1449.72][1449.72][end of transcript][1451.72][1451.72][end of transcript][1453.72][1453.72][end of transcript][1455.72][1455.72][end of transcript][1457.72][1457.72][end of transcript][1459.72][1459.72][end of transcript][1461.72][1461.72][end of transcript][1463.72][1463.72][end of transcript][1465.72][1465.72][end of transcript][1467.72][1467.72][end of transcript][1469.72][1469.72][end of transcript][1471.72][1471.72][end of transcript][1473.72][1473.72][end of transcript][1475.72][1475.72][end of transcript][1477.72][1477.72][end of transcript][1479.72][1479.72][end of transcript][1481.72][1481.72][end of transcript][1483.72][1483.72][end of transcript][1485.72][1485.72][end of transcript][1487.72][1487.72][end of transcript][1489.72][1489.72][end of transcript][1491.72][1491.72][end of transcript][1493.72][1493.72][end of transcript][1495.72][1495.72][end of transcript][1497.72][1497.72][end of transcript][1499.72][1499.72][end of transcript][1501.72][1501.72][end of transcript][1503.72][1503.72][end of transcript][1505.72][1505.72][end of transcript][1507.72][1507.72][end of transcript][1509.72][1509.72][end of transcript][1511.72][1511.72][end of transcript][1513.72][1513.72][end of transcript][1515.72][1515.72][end of transcript][1517.72][1517.72][end of transcript][1519.72][1519.72][end of transcript][1521.72][1521.72][end of transcript][1523.72][1523.72][end of transcript][1525.72][1525.72][end of transcript][1527.72][1527.72][end of transcript][1529.72][1529.72][end of transcript][1531.72][1531.72][end of transcript][1533.72][1533.72][end of transcript][1535.72][1535.72][end of transcript][1537.72][1537.72][end of transcript][1539.72][1539.72][end of transcript][1541.72][1541.72][end of transcript][1543.72][1543.72][end of transcript][1545.72][1545.72][end of transcript][1547.72][1547.72][end of transcript][1549.72][1549.72][end of transcript][1551.72][1551.72][end of transcript][1553.72][1553.72][end of transcript][1555.72][1555.72][end of transcript][1557.72][1557.72][end of transcript][1559.72][1559.72][end of transcript][1561.72][1561.72][end of transcript][1563.72][1563.72][end of transcript][1565.72][1565.72][end of transcript][1567.72][1567.72][end of transcript][1569.72][1569.72][end of transcript][1571.72][1571.72][end of transcript][1573.72][1573.72][end of transcript][1575.72][1575.72][end of transcript][1577.72][1577.72][end of transcript][1579.72][1579.72][end of transcript][1581.72][1581.72][end of transcript][1583.72][1583.72][end of transcript][1585.72][1585.72][end of transcript][1587.72][1587.72][end of transcript][1589.72][1589.72][end of transcript][1591.72][1591.72][end of transcript][1593.72][1593.72][end of transcript][1595.72][1595.72][end of transcript][1597.72][1597.72][end of transcript][1599.72][1599.72][end of transcript][1601.72][1601.72][end of transcript][1603.72][1603.72][end of transcript][1605.72][1605.72][end of transcript][1607.72][1607.72][end of transcript][1609.72][1609.72][end of transcript][1611.72][1611.72][end of transcript][1613.72][1613.72][end of transcript][1615.72][1615.72][end of transcript][1617.72][1617.72][end of transcript][1619.72][1619.72][end of transcript][1621.72][1621.72][end of transcript][1623.72][1623.72][end of transcript][1625.72][1625.72][end of transcript][1627.72][1627.72][end of transcript][1629.72][1629.72][end of transcript][1631.72][1631.72][end of transcript][1633.72][1633.72][end of transcript][1635.72][1635.72][end of transcript][1637.72][1637.72][end of transcript][1639.72][1639.72][end of transcript][1641.72][1641.72][end of transcript][1643.72][1643.72][end of transcript][1645.72][1645.72][end of transcript][1647.72][1647.72][end of transcript][1649.72][1649.72][end of transcript][1651.72][1651.72][end of transcript][1653.72][1653.72][end of transcript][1655.72][1655.72][end of transcript][1657.72][1657.72][end of transcript][1659.72][1659.72][end of transcript][1661.72][1661.72][end of transcript][1663.72][1663.72][end of transcript][1665.72][1665.72][end of transcript][1667.72][1667.72][end of transcript][1669.72][1669.72][end of transcript][1671.72][1671.72][end of transcript][1673.72][1673.72][end of transcript][1675.72][1675.72][end of transcript][1677.72][1677.72][end of transcript][1679.72][1679.72][end of transcript][1681.72][1681.72][end of transcript][1683.72][1683.72][end of transcript][1685.72][1685.72][end of transcript][1687.72][1687.72][end of transcript][1689.72][1689.72][end of transcript][1691.72][1691.72][end of transcript][1693.72][1693.72][end of transcript][1695.72][1695.72][end of transcript][1697.72][1697.72][end of transcript][1699.72][1699.72][end of transcript][1701.72][1701.72][end of transcript][1703.72][1703.72][end of transcript][1705.72][1705.72][end of transcript][1707.72][1707.72][end of transcript][1709.72][1709.72][end of transcript][1711.72][1711.72][end of transcript][1713.72][1713.72][end of transcript][1715.72][1715.72][end of transcript][1717.72][1717.72][end of transcript][1719.72][1719.72][end of transcript][1721.72][1721.72][end of transcript][1723.72][1723.72][end of transcript][1725.72][1725.72][end of transcript][1727.72][1727.72][end of transcript][1729.72][1729.72][end of transcript][1731.72][1731.72][end of transcript][1733.72][1733.72][end of transcript][1735.72][1735.72][end of transcript][1737.72][1737.72][end of transcript][1739.72][1739.72][end of transcript][1741.72][1741.72][end of transcript][1743.72][1743.72][end of transcript][1745.72][1745.72][end of transcript][1747.72]
I only need, I need one more.
You need one more?
I just need one more person. One more. Just one. Come, we just need one. We just need one. Do you have a motion to adjourn this Board of Aldermen meeting?
So moved.
Second.
The motion is second on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Ayes have it. Meeting's adjourned. Thank you everybody.
Bye bye.